Welcome, everyone. Weaver County Commission Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 7th. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bollos. I'm joined by Commissioner Jim Harvey, Commissioner Gage Frower. We will invite the audience to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, we'll have Craig Brant offer an invocation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this beautiful sunny day. We're grateful to gather here as a body of Weaver County employees and commission to conduct this meeting in the affairs of the county and ask thy blessing upon those efforts to serve our citizens. And we pray for them, Father. We know times can be difficult and that the world around us seems to swirl in darkness, and we pray that they can have light in their lives and that we can help be a source of that to some degree. And we ask humbly that we'll be able to reach out and lift up in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Brant. Item D on our agenda is Commissioner comments, including our stall of fame. Shaun, are you expecting to do that today?
Yes, but you're making it some work.
You know what? Why are people always working? We'll come back to that if he shows up. How's that? Commissioners, any other comments other than that?
No.
None for me, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on for now to item E, agenda-related public comments. Comments will be taken from the audience for any item that is on the agenda. Yes, that you keep your comments to three minutes, and if you'd like to speak in one of the public hearings, please reserve your comments for that time. Anyone who'd like to come forward? Okay, we'll move on to item F, consent items. Number one, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $8,437.57. Number two, requests for approval of warrants, numbers 106094 through 106149, and 493269 through 493360, in the amount of $1,191,993.40. For a summary of warrants and purchase orders, Ricky Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We issued four purchase orders this week for $8,000. Eighty-six percent of that amount are $7,000, so it's for the Health Department for vaccines. Fourteen percent are the $1,000s for the library for ice melt. As far as warrants, we issued 148 checks this week for $1.2 million. Twenty percent of that amount, or $235,000, is for IT, and that is for software maintenance as well as some telecommunications charges. We had two items at about fourteen percent, or $190,000. One is for the jail to install four rooftop HVAC units and to pay for utilities. The other for the Golden Spike Ment Center, and that is to purchase two tractors. Eleven percent, or $126,000, is the D Avenue connection, as well as Seventeenth Street Road construction in Ogden, and these are paid for by transportation tax dollars. Nine percent are at $110,000 for the library, and that went towards software to RFID gates and books and materials. And then seven percent, or $82,000, was a chiller replacement and some software. Top five vendors or payees that the county had this week: Cash Valley Electric for $237,000, Brigham Implement Company, $172,000, Ogden City, $148,000, Salmon Mechanical, $118,000, and Gunther's Incorporated for $71,000.
Questions for Mr. Hatch?
None for me, thanks.
I do have one. Gunter Mechanical. Shaun, sorry. Gunter Mechanical, is, can you tell me, I don't know the specifics, and I don't know that I have a concern, but isn't that something that our in-house can do when it comes to mechanical? Do you know anything about that? Ricky, do you have a backup on that? I should have caught that in the prelim.
I'll pull, if Shaun doesn't know, I'll, let me pull up the payment right now and see what it was for.
Chiller for Kiesel?
Yeah, that's why. Yeah, if we purchased it, then they will install it.
I got it. Thank you. No, that's, that's great.
Okay. No other questions. Then we'll move to number four, requests for approval of new business licenses. Number five is a request for approval of the minutes for the meeting held on September 30th, 2025. Number six, requests for approval of a facility rental agreement with the Utah Department of Natural Resources Division of Wildlife Resources to hold regional advisory council meetings in the Weaver Center for the 2026 year. And number seven, requests for approval of a right-of-way agreement by and between Weaver County and the Utah Department of Transportation as part of the acquisition process for the bridge replacement on Burley Lane. Commissioners, I'm ready for motion.
Motion to approve the consent items listed today, Madam Chair, on our agenda, F, one through and including seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we'll go back to item D on the agenda for our stall of fame. Shaun?
I'm happy today.
Glad you're happy.
Yes.
It's always nice to have happy people here, Shaun.
Especially to recognize an amazing employee. So, stall of fame winner for this month, or awardee for this month, is Chad Meyer-Hoffer from the county's Engineering Division. And I, there's, there's too much good for me to say about Chad I could take all day. Chad has been here at the county for over 20 years, and when I first started about 20 years ago, he was one of the first ones to take me under his wing and kind of teach me the ropes, and was always so kind and so helpful, and he's been that way ever since. Chad oversees our sewers in Weaver County, both out west and up in the Ogden Valley, and sometimes we have emergencies, and Chad is the one that gets the calls and responds. And he has done an amazing job handling that task, which is not easy, and it's not pretty work. And he, he does it all with, just with ease, and he keeps his, he's always calm, he's always patient, he's always kind, and he is just, he's, I wish we had 100 Chad's working here at Weaver County. He's amazing. So, more I could say, but I'm just so grateful to have Chad as part of our team, and the county is very, very lucky to have him. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chad, did you want to say anything? Other than, I didn't know you started at the county when you were 15 years old.
We, yeah, right? We wanted to have more people here. Unfortunately, as you know, work is very busy right now, and Gary and others were unable to be here, so.
Well, Shaun knew if you told me earlier, I would have bolted.
See? We had to probably wrangle you away from doing some job.
Yeah. But I think the only thing that I can really say is that, I guess, I don't really like recognition a whole lot, but, you know, I'm only the way that I am by the people that are next to me. So, there's a lot of great individuals that work here at the county. So, those from the Roads Department, Property Management, Engineering, Planning, Building Inspection, you know, they're the ones that are helping me shine, so, thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Thanks, Chad. Chad, come back up, we want a picture with you.
I did.
That's right, yes. Thank you, this is something.
All right, smile on three. One, two, three. Count it out. One, two, three.
That was like five more.
I know.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment if I might.
Yes, please.
So, I think it'd be appropriate, Chad actually is part of my portfolio under the Engineering Department, and I could say that sometimes, as Shaun has mentioned, we do get communication from the members of the public, usually they're not good about the sewer, but Chad has a great way of handling the public, even in extreme, what I would call somewhat obnoxious environments. But he does a great job in settling the people down and making sure that, at the end of the day, the job gets done, which is what they do in engineering, and under Shaun and Gary, and that leadership, he's done a great job. So, appreciate what you do, Chad.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
Yeah, I just, you know, you may not realize this, Chad, long time ago, decades ago, 20-something years ago, there was a big flood. After, it was after hours on a weekend, a big flood coming down Four Mile, and Four Mile is the creek that's out there coming through North O'Harrisville out that way and kind of runs throughout by the Golden Spike. And people west of that were being flooded in their homes, but Chad was able to come, and he knew the valves by which to divert storm water when we have a big events and use some of the Corps of Engineer retention ponds, just some of that knowledge. He's like an encyclopedia, having all that, all that knowledge on how to relieve really potential hard things in the other parts of, everywhere, whether it's in the lower valley, the upper valley. Chad just knows where everything is. You're just a real asset, but more importantly, Chad, I count you as a great friend. You're loyal, you're kind, you're serving, you're humble, you're smart, you're just, we're just so honored to have you in our county. You're really a good man, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. I would just echo what Commissioner Frower said. The problem solvers usually find themselves in the worst positions, and with the least happy people in the county, and the personality is so important in those situations, so thanks, Chad, for.
It's great to have somebody to diffuse.
Yes, yes.
Sometimes those environments can be a little too hostile. You need somebody with a personality that can diffuse it rather than cause increase.
Escalate it, yep. So, we appreciate that, Chad. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move back to item G for our public hearings.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn the public meeting and reconvene as a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're now in a public hearing. For number two, public hearing regarding an ordinance adopting a Development Agreement Amendment for the exchange of previously approved master plan development in the Wolf Creek area. Charlie Ubert.
Commissioners, hello, thank you. You guys have looked at this in a work session. Let me pull up just a brief slideshow that I gave to the Planning Commission. Just to orient you to the project, how do I make it full screen here? Nope. Well, we'll give it that way.
It was full screen, and then you clicked on something and went little.
I did. Weird. All right. So, just a, just a quick.
There we go. There we go, getting there.
Quick overview of the project. You guys could see what slide's coming next, so you can anticipate what I'm going to say. The project is in the red outline that you can see here, it's just over by the golf course up in the Wolf Creek area. It's really the village node from the Ogden Valley General Plan, it's the village node for the Wolf Creek area. As you can see, the current zoning for it is CBR-1. There is a little corner that's RE-15, but there's an existing development agreement that really does not anticipate any RE-15 happening there. It's kind of odd the way it's written, basically says that the entire property is going to be governed by the CBR-1 zone, even though the corner of it is in the RE-15 zone. Had I realized that before we had posted for public hearing with Planning Commission, I would have recommended we make an additional change to just send it all to our CBR-1, but we didn't do that, we didn't get the posting out, so I think we're kind of stuck with what we have here. Couple of things to look at, the currently approved master plan is right up against the roadway, but there is a bigger chunk of property to the east of that master planned area that is also part of the project, and it's intended to have a hotel site on it. So, you'll see a hotel and some parking there, and that parking is going to be shared-use parking. The applicant has proposed to divide the project up into different, I don't want to call them subzones or mini-zones, but they kind of act a little bit like that. You've got multipurpose commercial uses, hotel use, townhomes, and multifamily uses on the project in those different colors. So, we're looking at two things with this project. We're looking at, well, actually, one primary thing, and that's adoption of a development agreement, but adoption of the development agreement through the adoption of an ordinance. So, basically, what you have in front of you is ordinance that says that the commission hereby, if you're comfortable approving it, hereby approves the amendments to the master plan and development agreement, and gives the chair the authority to sign that development agreement. Just going to bounce through a few of these things. So, you've got some architectural renderings. One of the things that the Planning Commission didn't get to see is, well, trying to say three things at once. The architectural renderings that you have in front of you were in a previous plan, a previous development agreement before the one that is in place now, which is being superseded by the one that you are being asked to approve today. And so, one of the things the Planning Commission looked at with the one that's in place now is it didn't have any architectural styling theme or renderings that went with it, despite the fact that the previous one from 2015 or so did. These are from the 2015 or so development agreement. Planning Commission asked that we get some architectural standards put back into the master plan and development agreement, which the applicant has done so. Sorry, just bouncing through, because I don't know that you guys need all of the details from the Planning Commission meeting, other than to know what their recommendation was. And the recommendation was for approval of the project with certain conditions, and you can see in your staff report how the applicant's request meets each of those conditions. I just kind of give you a list in the staff report regarding each condition and the applicant's desired adjustments, or whether or not the applicant's comfortable meeting the condition on its own. So, you could see there's a couple of comments that the applicant has given us. For example, applicant has taken the Planning Commission's height recommendation. The Planning Commission recommended that the applicant not have a TDR component to the development agreement. The applicant has requested to maintain the right to have those TDRs. So, basically, the project right now has 84 development rights assigned to it. The applicant is looking for, I can't recall the total number, 150 or so total development rights, but everything above and in excess to 84 will need to be transferred from somewhere else on the valley floor. The Planning Commission did ask for outsourced resources, the development, well, basically, the development agreement says that if the applicant needs outsourced resources to help applications get through the governmental process, once the city becomes a city, that they have the right to ask for that. We have a clause in this development agreement that matches the other development agreements, the Bridges Development Agreement, the Eagle Crest, and the Kobe Development Agreement that basically says if the county's providing those services, then there, the applicant doesn't have the right to essentially demand for outsourced services. But if the city is doing it while the city is getting going, the development agreement would give the applicant the right to say, hey, I want this to go to an outsourced reviewer, so that they can get done in a timely manner. Planning Commission requested that that not be included in the development agreement, but it was included in those past three development agreements. Just to get through the rest, so we did add architectural standards. As far as the traffic safety study goes for the site, the Planning Commission did ask for a traffic study. The applicant has acknowledged that the traffic study is going to be, is going to need to be required anyway. This is coming off of Highway 158, Wolf Creek Drive. UDOT's going to want to pay very particular attention on how traffic is coming and going from that site, so they know UDOT's already going to require that. They're asking us not to put any additional details on there, so that we're not straddling or bridling the ability for UDOT to ask what they're asking for. They don't want to have to come back either to the county or to the city to ask for a bunch of changes if what we put in there conflicts with what UDOT asks of them. The Planning Commission did ask that whatever the future parking requirements are of the city, or whatever ordinances are changed to in the future for parking, that those apply to the project as opposed to the county's parking requirements today. The applicant has requested that we just stick with today's parking requirements. I think from, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I think from a predictability perspective, they know what today's parking requirements are, and I think they may have a little bit of a resistance to the unknowns of whatever future ordinances may be. Planning Commission asked for roadside beautification of Highway 158. The applicant has agreed to do that. And then, the Planning Commission, they asked for a couple of things. The original motion was, there is that pathway that runs along Wolf Creek Drive, along Highway 158. The original motion was for that to be extended up to the northern extent of the property. The applicant has volunteered to go even north of that, to go all the way up to Elk Horn Drive, which is just a little bit further north than the northern part of the property. But there was a request to amend that part of the motion from one of the Planning Commissioners, basically saying, there is an ability or a potential for the Highway 158 pathway to connect to the new pathway that's going in right now on 4100 North, as well as the pathways that is in the applicant's Eagle Crest project and the applicant's Bridges project. But, the challenge is, is figuring out how to get it there. We went up there with the, I was up there with a county engineer the other day looking at the highway. There's limited space on the side of the road. Once you get up past Elk Horn, there's limited space on the east side of the road where the pathway currently is, so we know at some point it's probably going to have to run over to the west side. Is that done at grade? Is that done with a tunnel? There's a whole bunch of different unknowns that we're just not quite sure yet how to address. There's maybe a quick and dirty way of getting those pathways through the golf course, but as the applicant mentioned to you guys in your work session, he's going to have to hand out helmets for people to use those, so that the golf balls aren't hitting them in the head, or maybe wait a little bit until we kind of figure out a better way to make those alignments. The applicant has mentioned he is committed to working on getting those connections made. The Planning Commission's motion ultimately was work with staff to figure out how to do it. I don't know that we've come up with a solution yet on how to, how to make that happen. Too many unknowns. Okay, so that is the presentation. See if I missed anything. Go through my notes, my brain here. I think that is it. So, on your agenda is a request to approve an ordinance that would essentially approve the modifications to that development agreement. Any questions for me?
Questions, Commissioners, or do you want to wait till after the public hearing?
I'd like to ask, Charlie, have you got a staff recommendation on this?
Yeah, staff recommendation was for approval on this. There wasn't a ton of changes from the original proposal. In fact, what we have set up here goes into a little bit more detail, sets up the rights and responsibilities of the applicant, rights and responsibilities of the county, which will become the city in the future, and so I think there's a lot more benefit to both sides with the way that this is drafted. As far as the Planning Commission's recommendations that the applicant is a little resistant to, those are all policy questions, considerations for you guys to figure out whether or not you're comfortable with the way the applicant has gone. The big difference or the big adjustment between the old development agreement, or the, sorry, the existing development agreement and this one is, there is a hotel going on the property that is bigger than what the previous development agreement showed. Originally, when I traced the boundary of the proposed hotel, it looked like it was huge. I gave that feedback back to the applicant, and he said it is nowhere near that size, and so his architect gave us some information on how big the footprint of that hotel will be, which the majority of that hotel is actually going to be under grade. The majority of the, of the square footage is going to be under grade, and it's going to include underground parking and conference rooms and stuff like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, explain to me one more time about the TDRs up there, that TDR clause in there. Help me with that again. Just go over that point again.
Yeah, so the, if you'll recall from our conversations about the Bridges Development and Eagle Crest Development and Kobe, there were, there were some TDRs that were moved around within the Wolf Creek area. As assigned to this project, we've, we have an understanding that there are 84 units assigned to the property. The applicant is asking for the ability to go up to 144 if they move those rights in from somewhere else on the valley floor into the project. So, Planning Commission said, hmm, maybe we don't want that level of unpredictability. Let's just nix the allowance for TDRs. The CBR-1 zone doesn't currently have any provisions allowing the CBR, or excuse me, the TDR transfers, and so to make it work for this project, if it is going to work for this project, the development agreement has to specifically state, by state statute, has to specifically state that this is a receiving area, and it can receive up to how many, whatever number it is. So, that'd be the difference between 84 and 144 if the applicant did maximize that. Planning Commission just asked, let's just stick to what you're assigned, let's not talk about future TDRs, and let's move on. Applicant is asking that, but leave that open.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
That answered my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have some other comments after the public hearing, so let's move to number three, Charlie, for the presentation of the public hearing regarding an application to rezone approximately 8.73 acres of land from the AV3 zone to the FB zone to amend the Eden Crossing Development Agreement and to amend the Eden Street Regulating Plan and County Code.
Great. So, presentation, this one's, I think, even shorter than the last one. You guys are familiar with the Eden Crossing project, came to you a couple of years ago for approval. The applicant has acquired eight acres and some change, which is in that blue polygon there that they're asking to add to the project. Within that, adding to that project, it would extend the Form Based Zone to apply to those properties there. If you'll recall from the Form Based Zone, the Form Based Zone has essentially zones within that zone based off of a street regulating plan, and the applicant is asking for the street regulating plan, let me show you this image here. On the right-hand side, with that lighter yellow being the majority of that eight-acre piece, that would be single-family residential, medium lot, single-family residential. So, it basically acts exactly like a single-family residential zone would within the Form Based Zone. The current street regulating plan looks like that, if you recall when we were looking at this, my original recommendation is that we try and make connections to all these streets, and I think there was a little bit of resistance to trying to plan streets on adjacent property owners who aren't looking to develop, and so we didn't actually make those connections. We just showed arrows saying maybe at some point in the future, these can connect. The applicant is looking to actually adjust that to make some of those connections. The, so you can kind of see the difference there.
Okay, go back through, sorry, Madam Chair, may I? Go back through those maps again, just a little slower. You click pretty quick, Charlie.
So, this is the existing.
Right.
Street regulating plan.
Right.
That is what they're proposing, so that, I'm going to move.
Got it.
Image on the right, I'm going to move it right over top.
Yep.
Of the existing plan.
Yep.
Just going to kind of click back and forth, so you can see that. So, on the right-hand side of the project, you can see kind of a square with maybe a park in the middle. The original design of that was intended so that the entrance into Eden Acres would, cars would have to hit 90-degree angles to get to that entrance. Those 90-degree angles are traffic calming. We wanted to make sure that the connection into Eden Acres was for Eden Acres to connect to this project, not a new thoroughfare for people who are in this project, or in the Kobe, or in the Wolf Creek, to go through Eden Acres. And that was one of the biggest concerns that Eden Acres folks gave us, was that they believed this is going to be a new thoroughfare through their development. People will usually drive according to the path of least resistance, so if we make that a little bit more resistance to get into Eden Acres, it's less likely for them. We wanted to make sure that the connection into Eden Acres was for Eden Acres to connect to this project, not a new thoroughfare for people who are in this project, or in the Kobe, or in the Wolf Creek, to go through Eden Acres. And that was one of the biggest concerns that Eden Acres folks gave us, was that they believed this is going to be a new thoroughfare through their development. People will usually drive according to the path of least resistance, so if we make that a little bit more resistance to get into Eden Acres, it's less likely for them to go in that direction. Where the applicant is proposing to kind of smooth that out, the applicant has given a counter to the concern, and basically said, look, we're willing to put up a gate that has free pedestrian crossing but doesn't allow vehicles to get through. My staff report on recommending either a gate or bollards, or something that the fire chief, the applicant, you guys are all comfortable with, something that's removable so that the commission or the future city can remove it in the future and make that connection. But at the very beginning, initially, we want to make sure both construction traffic as well as new traffic coming in knows that that shouldn't be relied on as the route out of their development. Plus, making it pedestrian-friendly, you get a really cool connection for the Eden Acres folks to go over to the new commercial center of Eden Crossing without ever having to get out onto the highway. So, we thought that was pretty important. We thought the applicant's recommendation was a pretty good recommendation. If you'll recall, that was also the outcome of the connection that goes up into Trappers from Kobe to the north. So, connecting Kobe to Trappers to the north, they'll have a temporary gate there as well that the city could take down at some point in the future.
But still allow pedestrians.
Still allow pedestrians to get through, yep. And my take on that is, almost every circumstance that I've ever seen something like this in, you're not going to have traffic go in the other direction. You're going to have the new, the old neighborhood coming through the new neighborhood, not the other way around, as long as the path of least resistance for the new neighborhood is in a different direction. So, the map that you're seeing here, I'm actually going to show you a different map in just a second. This is the map that I originally recommended to the Planning Commission and to the applicant, given, give a little bit of focus to these two connections here. One connection to adjacent property here, and one connection to the street down here. My original thought was, you probably don't even need a gate to get into Eden Crossing if you've got a direct route to the highway. Path of least resistance would be that. But, this, it's a nine to 10-acre piece of property. There are several different parcels, several different owners in there. It is currently underdeveloped. You've got two homes on there and some farmland, very large lots. I suspect, over the next 20 to 50 years, you're probably going to see some development in there. The current landowners are very insistent that they are not going to develop the property, and that they would like to make sure that we know they're not going to develop property, that they don't want special considerations for development. I'm a little concerned that if we completely wrap streets around that little area, the only way in and out is going to be by the highway. So, if you do get development in there, it's just going to be a cul-de-sac, and it's going to push everyone out to the highway, which you don't have multiple ways around. That's the only way through is on that highway if you don't make some good connections in here. So, working with the applicant, he really didn't want to make the neighbors who own the property mad by making a connection, but I did tell him I was going to advocate for that pretty strong with you guys, and he said, okay, I'll make the connection to the east, but let's not talk about the connection to the south, which I think is just fine because of the connection to the south.
If only nine lots, you're good.
Yeah, nine, if we keep the same zoning, if the city decided to go Form Based or something like that, you could potentially get more, but right now, only nine. Or, excuse me, it'd only be three under the three-acre zone. But, if you actually use the street regulating plan, it would probably be closer to somewhere between nine and 15 in there. If you look at where the mouse is right here, and you measure up to the applicant's next road right there, that's only about 450 feet. That's a pretty tight block. So, we agree that that connection wouldn't be needed. And then, if and when these landowners choose to develop, they can make the connection to this project here at some point in the future. So, a little bit of resistance from the landowner and the applicant from having that connection, but I think from a community perspective, long-term, I think it's going to be really important to have. Okay. Let me do the same thing for you that I did with the Eden, or excuse me, with the Exchange Project. So, the Planning Commission put 15 specific conditions on this project, or excuse me, 12, 12 specific conditions on this project. I just want to walk you through some of those. Condition number one was a request for a storm drain that addresses a storm drain problem that comes from the Kobe Project to the north, down through this project and into the Eden Acres Project to the south and east. The request is basically that the applicant do something about that that may be above and beyond what they would otherwise be required to do if they're just looking at rough proportionality. The applicant, in talking with the county engineer, has said that's already going to be a requirement of the Kobe Project. My only small nuance there is, if it's a requirement of the Kobe Project, it's not in the Kobe Development Agreement. Right now, you're in a rulemaking process, approval of Kobe at this point, since rulemaking and development agreement has already done with that, would just be administrative. So, my only concern, whether it's this applicant or some other applicant in the future, is they build this really nice, robust drainage system that is later on called a quote-unquote "system improvement" that they deserve compensation for. So, it may be better to put that in this development agreement as a voluntary contribution from the applicant, not as something that could be claimed as a system improvement for the future. That is not currently shown, listed in this development agreement right now. So, that's the only one that I'm slightly concerned about, having challenges enforcing in the future. As far as the rest goes, the applicant has volunteered to reduce the total number of units from 350 to 300. If you remember, the Form Based Zone requires transfers, transferable development rights. And so, in order for the applicant to get to, whether it's 300, 350, or something else, they're going to have to transfer the majority of those in. The property has a base density right number. I can't remember what that total is. It's probably close to seven or eight development rights. Everything else above and beyond that number needs to be transferred in. Applicant has said, well, let's go from 350, which is what's in their current development agreement, down to 300. But the applicant said, okay. Applicant has said, we probably won't even hit 300. So, that was a pretty easy give for the applicant. As far as the short-term rentals go, the current development agreement limits short-term rentals to just properties in the mixed-use commercial, along mixed-use commercial streets. The big concern from the community and from the Planning Commission was that the new eight-acre piece that has the single-family residential, that any of these STRs could potentially show up there. So, the applicant said, we'll make sure we limit it so none of it can go within those single-family residential that is buffering the Eden Acres subdivision, but leaving it open for a little bit more opportunity for those units to be somewhere else. But they have limited to eight, eight out of their total. So, pretty, pretty big limitation on them. Height restrictions. So, the Planning Commission requested that the total height of all buildings be limited to 40 feet. Applicant was requesting 50 feet. Planning Commission gave some caveats to that. The hotel could be up to 50 feet, so you'd have one building in there that could be up to 50, the rest of them limited to 40. And the Planning Commission asked that the building facades that face the public street, that they be limited to a single-story with second and third stories being stepped back or set back from that street. They didn't mention how far set back, 20, 30 feet is probably plenty for that. The planning purpose for a step back is to maintain good access to light and sunlight, but also not make it feel so big and so massive up next to the streets. Applicant has said that they want to just stick with what the county commissioners approved in their original agreement, which is no building up next to the highway can be taller than 40 feet, and 200 feet behind that, then they can go up to the taller height that they had. Current development agreement actually said, if you're right next to the highway, you're within, I think, is either 50 or 100 feet of the highway. You can't be any taller than one story. But then, there's a caveat to that that said, unless there are other buildings in the area on other properties that are allowed to do something different, and there is a building just down the road that Mr. Zane Froh erected, that is a two-story building right up next to that highway. So, applicant is saying that already undid that one-story limitation from the existing development agreement. The applicant asked that if the hotel has any more than 100, or excuse me, applicant, the Planning Commission asked that if the hotel has any more than 100 rooms in it, that anything in excess of that will count as a two-to-one transfer against their development rights. Applicants requested that that not be applied. Right now, hotel rooms, if it's just a single room, does not count towards transfers. If it's a hotel suite, kitchen, bathroom, living quarters, that would count as a dwelling unit and would require a transfer. So, Planning Commission is basically saying, look, if you've got two hotel rooms that don't, that isn't a suite, anything above and beyond 100 rooms, we want that to start counting against their overall 300-unit density. Setbacks. So, the applicant has requested a number of modifications to the minimum requirements of the Form Based Zone, some of which includes the setbacks for both the medium lot residential and the small lot residential. Just, they're basically asking for more flexibility in how those setbacks work. There's a little bit more flexibility in how lot size, how big lot sizes are as well. If we're looking at this from a Form Based Zone applying to a quarter-acre lot business owner here, quarter-acre lot business owner here, quarter-acre lot business owner there, having a very definitive set standard, I think, is going to be important, so we're not just all over the place. Where this is a master-planned community, it may be more beneficial to show a little bit more flexibility in some of those standards. If you can get some of those lot sizes a little bit smaller, and some of those buildings a little bit closer together, chances are, you're going to get some bigger lot sizes out on the periphery, and that is what the applicant is essentially asking for, is let me get a little bit of leniency on these standards so that the buffer that is next to Eden Acres can be a little bit bigger lot sizes and blend a little bit better with the neighboring development. The specific request from the Planning Commission was about setbacks and said, don't waive those, don't modify those, but let's acknowledge that they can come and ask for special exceptions in the future. Applicant has requested they just stick with what they've proposed to have some flexibility there. Connection to Eden Acres, the applicant has committed to the Planning Commission's request, which is the gate, and making sure there's only one street that goes into Eden Acres. The, if you guys will recall, part of the negotiation between the county commission and the applicant on the original development agreement was, how do we get street improvements to that Eden intersection? Whether it's a roundabout or not a roundabout, how do we make sure that this project triggers those kinds of improvements? The applicant volunteered a $2 million, $2 million towards that project. The development agreement says, before they start turning dirt, that money's got to come over to the county to make that happen. Again, that was before the city was a thing, or even being talked about. Since then, we've learned from UDOT, we've learned a little bit more internally amongst ourselves, that if you've got commercial opportunities on both sides of a roundabout or on all quadrants of a roundabout, roundabout really isn't conducive to pedestrian crossing. The safest thing to put there will be a streetlight that's really not going to be an exciting prospect for Ogden Valley folks. The general plan is very clear, we don't want any signals in the area, we want roundabouts. Before Eden Crossing was planned on that side of the intersection, most of that village and commercial space was on the west side of Highway 158, and so having a roundabout there made a little bit more sense at that time. But since we're using more quadrants of that intersection, it's going to be better for that to be, either remain a four-way stop or turn into a signal. That's a long way of saying, the applicant has said, well, sorry, step one back, the $2 million the applicant was going to contribute towards that roundabout, a million was going to be a gift, a donation, and the other million was going to be paid back through impact fees or through pioneer agreements, by some other metric or measure as other developers in the area come in to develop. There was a lot of conversation about as Powder Mountain grows, as, we had some conversations with Cowboy Partners at one point, and the applicant wanted to make sure that he wasn't eating the entire cost of that. So, taking a step back from all of that, not knowing how that roundabout's going to go, or whether it's going to go, not knowing what direction the city's going to want to go with some of these improvements, the applicant has suggested instead, let's not do the $2 million with a $1 million payback, let's just do a $1 million gift, give it over to the new city, and call it good, let the city spend that how they're going to. The Planning Commission said, we want to put a limitation on that spending, that the city isn't going to use it on operations, that they're going to use it on infrastructure that benefits the city. So, applicant has agreed to that, and that's in the development agreement now. Talk about outsourced reviews with Eden, or excuse me, with the Exchange, same conversation about this one. And then, the original, or the existing development agreement for Eden Crossing has some hours of construction, some dust mitigation, some noise mitigation. Applicants requesting, well, the Planning Commission asked that whatever new standards are put in place by the city regarding noise, construction activities, and dust mitigation, that those laws be allowed to apply to this project as it's constructed. The applicant said, let's just stick with what we currently have in place. I think it's just a predictability question for them. So, those are the 12 conditions that the Planning Commission placed on it, and the responses from the applicant for that. Any questions for me?
Any questions before we go to the public hearing?
I do have a question regarding the $1 million donation. I think I understood you, but clarify, so, original intent was the roundabout. My conversations with UDOT, that was likely a roundabout will not go in there unless it's donated far more than $2 million, based on their experience that we've, that they've seen on 100 South and the highway. So, what happens to that $1 million if the roundabout, we know that a semaphore can be put in for less than $1 million?
Yeah. Yeah, and if it's a semaphore, UDOT will cover that cost.
Right.
Right. So, the $1 million, the way the development agreement currently reads is that that $1 million can be spent by the city for parks, rec, infrastructure, trails, there's a few infrastructure pieces that they could put in, and it just leaves it up to the future city to decide.
So, you're counting parks and rec as infrastructure?
Mm-hmm. Yep, and the development agreement's counting that.
All right. I guess that's a problem I have with that. But infrastructure mine would be, infrastructure
Yeah.
Roads, etc., not parks, rec. That's a separate district, but anyway, we can have that conversation.
Certainly.
Mr. Harvey?
Not at this time. I'm going to reserve my comments for later. I want to hear what the public, if there is any comments, would be able to say.
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
All right. Item four is the public comments. We'll start with the first one, with the Wolf Creek area. Any comments to that? Please state your name for the record.
First, Commissioner Bolos, is this, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry, this will be the one for the Wolf Creek area, the amendment to the Exchange.
To the Exchange?
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you. Jan Fulmer, 3741 Red Hawk Circle in Eden. Just a few comments on the area that is proposed for the Exchange. This is at least the third plan that's been proposed for that area. The very first plan that came out was around 2011 after the Wolf Creek bankruptcy, and then everybody figured out who got what parcels after the bankruptcy auction. At that time, it was so nice because the community was presented with a community center, an Olympic pool, a small strip mall that had a restaurant, a brewery, a coffee shop. Nothing ever happened. Then, the plans changed again, the driving range came back, and there was just the strip mall, and now this is again the third plan. Okay, the Form Based Zone allows you to do that, but this is a highly, highly congested area. And even though there have been at least two more roads, one is under construction right now to provide egress, I always remember what happened when we had that natural gas main break. People could not get out to pick up their children at school. Please, this has to be considered. In addition to having parking, when there is a tournament at the golf course, the existing area that is to be developed is packed with cars. Right now, the parking for the golf course is very limited because Reed Hastings has taken as much as he can of the two lodges that are there and has marked it as private parking. So, one area cannot park in the other area's parking, and there is very limited parking. So, I do think there are safety issues here, and there does have to be adequate parking. There is a lot of people moving in there. That's all I ask you to consider. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the Exchange? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to the next item, which is the Eden Street Regulating Plan. Plan and the amendment to the, to the Eden Crossing Development Agreement. Any comments on those? If you please state your name for the record, thank you.
Good morning. My name's Jeff Barber. I live in East Huntsville, and I'm here this morning as representing the planning, the Ogden Valley Planning Commission as the vice chair and as the person who made the motion both for the exchange and for Eden Crossing. So, a little perspective, first of all, I'm not involved in the valley in any of the incorporation issues, any of the politics or any of the litigation. I'm just involved with the Planning Commission and just trying to see that the valley goes forward in a good way. And when I do that, I bring into it my experience having now lived in four mountain communities across the Western US, all growing and all sharing the same sort of challenges that exist in the Ogden Valley today and will continue to exist in, into the future. Those are just, that's the way it is in a, in a geographic area like that that's developing and growing. So that, everything has to be done well, or else there'll be problems, and I've seen the problems. So, my focus in trying to do my job that you all appointed me to is to look at the details, because the details really do matter. And I am actually a supporter of Eden Crossing and a supporter of some of the missing parts up in the valley. But that said, again, details matter. So I want to talk about, first, the Eden Crossing, the 12 findings that the Planning Commission brought forth in the motion that passed six to one. And they're all important, I would say, some probably more important than others and more obvious than others, but I think they're all important. The first one being the storm drain situation. And as Charlie said, that drain, which also will support what's going to happen in the Kobe development, is not in any of the current development agreements, and it needs to be somewhere documented. So I, we think that this particular development agreement should include the requirement for that storm drain. If it gets built earlier to support Kobe, great. If not, it will be in this legislative document. So we think that's important. I'm not going to go waste time with the ones that the applicants already agreed to. I'll just focus on the ones that there seems to be some pushback on. The biggest being height. So, the original agreement, it's my understanding, the original agreement, which was not exactly like the Planning Commission had asked, but the hotel was allowed to be 50 feet, even though you all had put in place for the form-based zoning a maximum height of 40 feet. But yet that hotel was allowed to be 50 feet. Now, in adding these eight acres, they want to go bigger or have the opportunity to go taller elsewhere. And we don't believe, the Planning Commission doesn't believe that's appropriate in that area specifically. And I think it's important to point out that if you look around, and I'll use Park City as an example, because Park City gets kicked around all the time by people saying, well, we don't want to be like Park City. Well, guess what? In Park City, they're very restrictive on height. There's currently an issue up there right now with the Yarra Hotel redevelopment, where the developers wanted to go higher than that, their commercial zone allows. And their commercial zone only allows 35 feet. But they wanted to go to 45 feet, and the legislative authority there said no. So that project is not going to go forward. And Park City's been very restrictive and very protective of their height in their commercial core for very good reasons. And I think you all should, should pay close attention to that. And I think in the Ogden Valley, which is flat, which doesn't have tall buildings, where a tall 50-foot building, especially in that area, would stick out, I think the valley, I think there needs to be careful consideration that 50 feet is tall, that 40 feet is more appropriate, and that stepbacks are really important. And stepbacks exist all over. If you go to any development like this, especially in any mountain community where you're, you're trying to not, you know, it's just not a standard urban situation, stepbacks are the way buildings are built. So the Planning Commission was very, very specific in saying that the hotel should be the only building taller than the code allows, which is your code, and that all the buildings should have stepbacks.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
I would just ask you to briefly address those things, because we heard the Planning Commission recommendations from Mr. Urt. So if you want to finish the list, would you please be brief on those?
Sure. We, we were in our meeting, I didn't get to bed that night till almost midnight. So a lot of effort went into this by the Planning Commission, just so you're aware. In the original approval, there was discussion of the hotel being 100 rooms or less, but that's not written down anywhere that I'm aware of. So our focus herein was to say, if it's going to be a bigger hotel than 100 rooms, some of the TDRs that the Ogden Valley General Plan is very specific about trying to utilize in these areas be used if the hotel is bigger than 100 rooms. So that's why we included that one. Parking is probably one of the biggest problems in mountain communities in the winter, for sure. And it's my understanding, in this county, there's one planning, or one parking, set of parking rules for the entire county, which I'm told were not developed based on a mountain situation or a large snowpack situation. So our focus is to make sure that any new dense development like this has adequate parking. And I believe there's one area or one stipulation where it's currently, the requirement is parking within less than 1,000 feet, which is three football fields. That's kind of far. They want to be able to go up to 3,000 feet. 10 football fields in the winter is a long way to walk, and I don't know that that would even be considered safe. So, the Planning Commission really wanted to focus on parking and really wanted to say that whatever the parking requirements are, at the point in time that this project is approved for actual building, that those requirements be what they abide by. Because parking is a problem in every single mountain snowy location that I'm certainly aware of. Setbacks are also important for a lot of the same reasons. A lot of effort went into developing the setbacks in the form-based zone, and we didn't feel that just throwing them out and letting whatever happens, happens is the right approach. We believe that the setbacks ought to either be the form-based zone setbacks or the setbacks that are in place for that type of development when the project actually happens. Setbacks involve snow storage, they involve aesthetics. There's a lot more involved with setbacks than just trying to, to put something big on a small lot. So we felt those were very important to consider. The, there are two issues that have impact on this development and also on the exchange, and those are the rules regarding noise, dust, hours of operation, and the outsourcing of inspections and other matters. The outlook of the Planning Commission is that it's not fair for the County Commission right now to punish the new incorporation before you even know what the new incorporation is capable of or not. And that's especially true given the state of Utah has rules and laws requiring or with requirements for inspections that they have to abide by, or else they get to go outside. So setting a standard right now, before you know what the new incorporation is capable of or not, for something that the state already governs, seems to be quite unfair to the new incorporation. So give them a chance. If they can't do it, within the required amounts of time, the state already has provisions to take care of that. So I believe those, that's the reasoning behind what the Planning Commission did. I think every one of those findings is important. Certainly, the height is the most obvious one. That's the one people will see and live with. That affects dark sky, that affects all sorts of, of things. The commission, the Planning Commission, as I said, was in session that night very long. We made a special exemption to go beyond the required, or the time the county has set for those meetings to end. And a lot of effort went into this. So we certainly hope you would look at and consider that effort when you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam Chairperson, members of the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, County Commission, my name is Bruce Baird. I'm counsel for the project. I just want to take a few minutes to address a few of these issues. First, again, we want to thank the staff for its hard work on this, for, we've had great cooperation with the staff. We also want to thank the Planning Commission for their detailed consideration of both of these. We obviously have some relatively minor disagreements with the Planning Commission. I would want to point out that the development agreements that you've seen in front of you actually have all of the changes that Charlie talked about there, that the developer has agreed to. So we don't have to make any changes here. I do want to address just a couple of specifics. Number one is the storm drainage. I think there's a, a way to square this circle rather than putting it in this development agreement, and that is, given the level of good faith we've worked with the county over the last several months and years, we would be willing to enter into a side agreement relatively quickly. We'll work as fast as we can to provide for the storm drainage system, tie it to the appropriate project from which funding may be received, set up reimbursement provisions, and we can get that done very quickly. It would not need to go through the Planning Commission. It would implement what the Planning Commission wants and what I think everybody wants to do up there, but it would be done quicker and easier because we just wouldn't do it as a development agreement. And we're willing to commit to do that. And I, I think you understand the good faith that these, this developer has worked with on all of these projects. So we believe that squares the circle, and we believe it's a lot better than putting it in this development agreement, which would require a decent amount of rewriting. Second, regarding the height, I, I think Charlie has, did a very good job of addressing that. And I would point out that I do a number of projects in Park City, and there are a vast number of buildings in Park City that are higher than, than 50 feet. And I don't think there's an analogous relationship here because of the historical nature and everything else. And we are agreeing to height restrictions. They're just somewhat different than what the Planning Commission wanted. And I think Charlie addressed them regarding the, the parking standards and the setback standards. We again think Charlie did a very good job of addressing them. And to be blunt about those, the development agreements are built on predictability. You want to know what you're able to do in terms of how much infrastructure you're putting in versus what types of uses that you can put in and what type of building structures. And given, I'm trying to say this politely, given the anti-development mode of some proponents of the new city, I think it's safe to say that the predictability in terms of parking and setbacks would be vastly inhibited, and the certainty that the project has would be vastly inhibited by leaving that to the future. I, you can manipulate quite easily what you can build on pieces of property by altering the setback and altering the property, the parking requirements in ways that, that are designed not, not really to implement wise policies, but designed to punish growth in particular developers. So we would request that you allow us the flexibility that, that Charlie has expressed. Obviously, there are provisions in the development agreement for developing under the future laws of either the city or the county. And if it turns out that the future laws of the city make more sense and are reasonable, we're perfectly willing to go back into the city and say, you know, we've, we've seen your laws and they make sense, and we're willing to operate under those laws if, extensively. So, but it gives us the choice of it, and it also gives us the predictability of not having to worry about malevolence as opposed to benevolence. And I think that there hasn't been any good showing of benevolence up to date. And if it shows up, we're happy to deal with it in the future. Other than that, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them. If I can answer them, that's fine. If not, we have the rest of our development team here, and John and Eric and Shane are more familiar with the actual details of some of these things. But otherwise, again, thank you and your staff for your consideration. And I think Charlie's done a very good job. And again, thanks to the Planning Commission, too.
Thank you.
Jan Fulmer, 37, 41, Red Hawk Circle in Eden. The comments I'd like to make really apply both to Eden Crossing and to the exchange. And Commissioner Harvey, they go back to some recommendations you made at the meeting on Eden Crossing in December 2023. Commissioner, they were excellent recommendations that you made, and quite frankly, I don't see where most of them have been adopted. Number one, you requested a lower height for the buildings, and you also recommended, well, it's okay to have something on the rooftop as two facilities do in Ogden, which is really kind of nice. And yes, that would be nice. We, weather would restrict how much we could use it in the valley, but I thought it was a great idea. But there was a great restriction on the height, which many people do agree with that. Not having the hotel on, right on top of Highway 66, and that is in Eden Crossing. You said you don't think that's a good place for it, for people to be looking at it, and we do agree with that. You basically said, when you look at Highway 66, to have the first level there be one story, then going back to two stories, then maybe to three stories. It has much more aesthetics to it. It's much more pleasing to look at. You also emphasized that you would like the units to be owner occupied, which is what you very much have been proposing, proposing, excuse me, for Western Weber County and all the development that's going on there, so that the children of families right now do have a place that they can afford. And there have been some excellent plans proposed in Western Weber County, that there be a public plaza, not a park, but a public plaza that's at least 10% of the total acreage for Eden Crossing. Since 8.73 acres are being added on to it, that size needs to increase. And you also indicated it would be good that the developer maintained that plaza for the public use. That also was an excellent idea. Reduction in the total number of STRs by 75%. I don't see where that has been specified. Okay? I thought those were excellent recommendations, and I don't see where those have been included in the plan. Perhaps you've had other discussions with the developer, I don't know, but it would be nice if they could be specifically included. The other thing is, I highly recommend that you please consider accepting the 12 conditions proposed by the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. I know the developer doesn't agree with, I believe, five or seven of them, but they are good and they are reasonable. So please, I hope you will consider including that in the development plans. Thank you.
Good morning. Corinne Lombardi, 2453 North Sierra Drive in Eden. I live in Eden Acres, and we are the subdivision that will be mostly impacted by Eden Crossing. So I'm here to talk about the road plan. And I know that the proposal has already been to eliminate the southern access and to go with the northern one with the gate. And I would ask that you consider not putting it in at all. And if you do, now. And that is accessed through the eight acres that were recently acquired and are part of what the developer's asking for now. I've spoken with the developer, and he is all for not putting it in. I get it. Why put in infrastructure you're not going to use? All it does is decay over time. I would suggest that a bike path or a walking path is tremendous. But there was some mention in the commission meeting, that the Ogden Valley Planning Commission meeting, that the primary use of that stubbed out or that connected road would be actually from Eden Acres, which I can assure you is not the case. It's like 30 seconds to get to the highway from anywhere in the subdivision. The increased traffic and usage would come from Cobay and all of the development up above. And because there's going to be traffic quieting planned for the two major roads in Eden Crossing, I've lived with traffic quieting before. Nobody really uses it unless you're going right to that point. You go around it. And the go around is through Eden Acres. We are a rural one-acre sort of subdivision with about 44 homes, soon to be 60. Kids, animals, walkers, bicyclists, that's what you find on our roads at any time of the day. It's at best a two-lane road with no sidewalks and no provisions for increased traffic. It's actually not a great road either. If you have no emergency vehicle in their right mind, will use that road and connect through to get to Eden Crossing. Number one, in the winter, they're not going to pass. And if there's people on the road and animals on the road and dogs on the road, big disaster. The easiest way for the fire department two blocks away to get to Eden Crossing is to go up the two planned roads into Eden Crossing. So since it's not being used now for emergency vehicles, I really just don't see that it would be used in the future, given the limitations of a lights and sirens kind of situation. I don't see any benefits to connecting the road. Right now, if you go up the hill a ways, going north, you've got two subdivisions, the Retreat and Highlands, they're not connected. There's no reason to connect them, as is there's no reason to connect Eden Crossing with Eden Acres. Two wildly different populations. One is rural residential with animals from pigs to goats to llamas and kids riding their bikes from the age of two all the way to 18, adults walking, families walking on the road constantly. Increased traffic would ruin our subdivision. The other is resort. It is not residential. There may be a few residential homes there, but there won't be many full-time residential. Just look around all the other subdivisions that are up there. On the hill, near, hard-pressed to find permanent full-time residents. It's mostly part-time. And many of them are STRs. And I did just hear, I think I heard correctly, that eight STRs were approved to go with the eight acres of small and medium-sized homes. Is that right?
No.
None, no?
Eight for the whole project.
For the entire, but not the eight acres. Okay, never mind then. I don't have anything to say about that. So my recommendation would be, don't even put the road in. If you want to do a connection, bikes, great. Put a bike lane in, put a walking path in. Those things would probably be well-used by both areas. But traffic, no. Traffic in terms of vehicles, no. Please don't do that. It would really kill our neighborhood in the long run, and people always go to the path of least resistance. There will be traffic coming down. Fastest road to Snow Basin, boom, right through our subdivision. And it'll be used that way. It's just human nature. Anyways, thank you very much for listening to me, and I do appreciate the time.
Thank you so much. Any others? Okay, Commissioners, I look for a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Commissioners, I would just point out that Mr. Barber shared thoughts as a planning commission chair. The planning commission report was given by Charlie, so I would ask you to consider those as personal comments.
Correct.
We will move on now to item six, which is action on public hearings. The first one is a request for approval of ordinance 2025-24, adopting a development agreement amendment for the exchange, a previously approved master plan development in the Wolf Creek area. Questions or comments, clarification?
Comments, if I might, Madam Chair?
Please.
So there was 12 conditions, I believe, that were attached to this. Quite honestly, I have some that I'm probably in agreement, others that I'm not in agreement with. And the comment was made that, that the commission has taken the stance that we're punishing the new city. I view it from the opposite direction, that follows state code and follows a recent court hearing that puts the county in charge of land use and all decisions and protecting private property rights until such time as a new city is created. So I object and take offense to the comments that we're punishing the new city. We're not punishing the new city. We're respecting and following state code and following what the court very clearly said is in the public's best interest and is the county's obligation. With that, if you're ready for a motion.
Please.
I'm going to make a motion that we table the development agreement for the exchange. I, I need some additional time to look. The one concern that I do have is the setback and some of, some of those issues. I can tell you right now that, that I disagree with condition seven, which is parking. Again, if that new city wasn't being formed, the petitioner, the applicant, has the right to have existing parking requirements placed in that development agreement. So I can, I'm consistent there. I believe fully that this DA development agreement should be consistent with the others. I don't think it's right that we have four or five different projects with one having a different development agreement. They should be consistent across the board, which I think actually is better for both the developer and the new city as they look at that development. But I'm going to make a motion to table this until time certain, for it should be sometime this month in October, whenever we can fit on the schedule.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Until whenever you fit on the schedule.
Yep.
I'll second that with comment.
Please.
I just want to put it out there right now. I don't understand, and I'll have to get some more information. Some of the restrictions, I'm in the same boat. I, there are conditions. We set those a long time ago, and I'm in agreement with regards to being consistent. We've established a pattern in being consistent, so I don't understand why there's a disparity. I, I don't know that tabling hurts it. I'm ready to move forward with a lot of, with a lot of corrections on some of those restrictions, but I'll, right now, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hold on, is that a roll call? Or no, I guess it's not. Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and I'll add my comment now. I do agree that even though we, I think we may be in agreement on some of the restrictions and where those end up, I think it's best to come back with a fresh document to review. And I will echo Commissioner Frower's comments. We're still functioning as the governing body over this area, and I think the parking that's established by county ordinances is sufficient. I think the traffic study that's addressed is something that, that will be, that will happen in the subdivision phase. I don't think that we necessarily need to worry about that. I do appreciate the renderings that are back in the development agreement, especially looking at those and recognizing that they really add, add to, and they're consistent with the character of the upper valley. I have some similar comments on the next one. So we, we'll go on to the approval of ordinance 2025-25 to rezone approximately 8.73 acres of land from the zone, from the AV3 zone to the FB zone, and amend the Eden Crossing development agreement. This will be separate from the street regulating plan.
Madam Chair, under the circumstances, I think to clean things up, I've got a lot of suggestions on those, especially on the corrections on those. I appreciate their remarks of one who spoke, Ms. Fulmer, that they liked what I had. That's the first compliment I've had on Eden Crossing and since we had our meeting. But I won't take that as the gospel truth. I'd like to, but I can't. I think they were right. They were the right thing to do at the right time, and I think staying consistent with that plan would be, I think, the right thing to do. So I'm confused at the message that was sent forth by that decision from the planning commission. We've got a good staff report. We've got the notes from the planning commission. I've watched most of that meeting that went till midnight. I don't agree with some of the comments that I think were made in that planning commission, and I've chosen not to be offended by them, but they, in my mind, were illegal. And I will not, I support the law. I don't support being, I'm going to follow the law. I'll just leave it at that. So with that, I'll make a motion that we table that Eden Crossing until time certain, and certainly by the end of October to get this done.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to second that with a comment, if I might.
Please.
So I agree with that. I think this needs to be addressed as far as the conditions. I think some of these conditions that flow through from our previous discussion also impact this, including parking, including the DA agreement being consistent. Again, setbacks need to be looked at and addressed based upon the flexibility that I believe developers need to make a successful project. And the more that we hamstring, as I said before, and try to outsmart the market, government's usually wrong. And also, on the $1 million donation, I don't agree that that can be used on any basically infrastructure that is chosen. That, infrastructure is pretty clear in my mind. That needs to be limited to roads, water, and sewer. End of story. So I think that if the million dollar stays in there, and again, that would be up to the new city to decide, but it needs to be limited, not left wide open.
May I, Madam Chair, make one more comment? There's one thing I'm going to say, though. Charlie, I've heard you say about roundabouts, that they're, they're less convenient. Sometimes people get out around them. I've had a chance to visit other areas that have more and more roundabouts. I like the raised pedestrian pathways going through the roundabouts, which slows traffic more. I'm in disagreement with you on those. I like the roundabout idea. I realize it's going to cost a lot more money. That may not be the favorable thing for, for one side or the other, but I think for the area up there, at least while we're, while we're still here, I like the roundabout idea, and I think you can work out something better with transportation. I think it's a better community feel. I realize there's a safety component, but it, there are ways to do that correctly. And, and so that's really what I have to say about that. I think, and I, as it relates to infrastructure, I want to point that out, too. Not for parks or recreation or things like that. Infrastructure is infrastructure. It almost, it's got to be in the ground, up there, so.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commissioners, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then the last one is ordinance 2025-26 to amend the Eden Street Regulating Plan in county code.
You know, I understand, and I appreciate Ms. Lombardi's comments very much, but I understand with regards to the second accesses and things like that, it was part of the plan. I'm in favor of that, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve that, that street regulating plan is presented by Mr. Stewart today.
And I'm going to second that with a question, if I might. So Charlie, where are you? So I understand that the developers agreed, and I understand the issue with Eden Acres, that that has agreed to be a crash gate rather than a through street. Is that correct or not?
Yeah, so the, the agreement as of right now is to build the street as if it is a through street, put a gate on it. The fire chief doesn't like to drive their couple million dollar fire truck through a crash gate, but they are supportive of a Knox box or something similar to that.
Well, and I agree that we, and I, I don't believe that would ever become a main thoroughfare, but in emergencies, that could be an additional egress, ingress out of there. So I support that with the idea that that be a crash gate, not a permanent street.
And just, and just like, if I may interject there, just like what we brought up about the gas line, or we know the problems with electrical power where they're headed, or just second accesses, or another opportunity for emergency services is always good. So I, I appreciate what, with what Ms. Lombardi said, and I would feel the same way, but I think in the long run, to have that, that could be permanently closed. I mean, for the most part, permanently closed unless emergency services has to have it for an emergency. It's just another opportunity. People can still walk around it or get through it, but that's, that's a, that's a solid, that's a, that's good planning. So I have no problem. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2025-26.
Actually, with the tabling of the prior two items, that number will be 2025-24.
24.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that correction.
Roll call vote for ordinance 2025-24. Commissioner Fow.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Chair Bollos.
Aye, motion carries. Item H.
Motion adjourned.
Message, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, adjourned.
In the audience this morning, as well as online, this is Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. This is the weekly meeting of the Weber County Board of Commissioners. I'm Gage Forall. I'll be conducting this morning. We'll be joined online by Commissioner Bollos, who's also attending. We're going to start this morning with the Pledge of Allegiance, will be led by Sean Wilkinson, and then we'll have a moment of silence. We'll go to that point. Sean?
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation of honor and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We felt that a moment of silence was appropriate based upon recent events we've had in the state of Utah and our great country. Let's go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Bollos, you're online. Do you have any comments you'd like to make at this point in time?
I don't, thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say, I think we've all experienced a, a week of, of turmoil, of distress, a lot of other things, based upon the events that happened in Utah County that most of us never expected to happen. And I think it's, was very much, very well said by our governor, that we have an opportunity to really head down two paths. One of those would be to tone down the political rhetoric, stop placing blame on political party or political individuals that may not necessarily agree with you in your day-to-day activities. So I think it's important to realize that regardless of what our president says, what our government, governor says, it's up to each of us as individuals to make the decision to either operate within the parameters of civility and kindness, or we go the other way. And I would hope that And I would hope that some of us may have had a wake-up call with this and take that path forward. I want to share just for a second a post that was made by a friend of mine from central Utah, Tammy Redore, that I think makes a lot of sense. She says, part of her statement, "May we always remember, our breath is a gift, our agency is a trust, and our legacy is built not by division, but by love." So I would hope that we can take the lessons learned over this past week and put those to better use throughout our communities, our state and our country. So thanks very much. Let's now go to public comments. Anyone in the audience or online that would like to make a public comment at this point in time? Kristi? I don't see anybody rushing the mic. So we're going to start with our agenda items, consent items F1 through 14. Consent item F1, request for approval of the purchase orders, the amount of $120,839.20. Two, request for approval to ratify warrants, 105895 through 105968, and 492776 through 492879, in the amount of $640,299.89. Three, request for approval of warrants, number 492880 through 492937, and 492938 through 493052, in the amount of $1,032,843.17. Let's now go to our summary of warrants and purchase orders, which would be Mr. Jason Horn. Jason, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner Frower and Chair Bollos, online. The purchase order summary, keeping in mind this is for the last two weeks, not just the last week. Total purchase orders is 12. That amount is 121,000. 27% or 32,000 of that is for the library in the form of public copiers and coin boxes, as well as compressor replacement. The, let's see, 25% or 30,000 is for Golden Spike, and that's for concessions. 24% or 29,000 is for the health department in the form of vaccinations. And 14% or 17,000 is for the jail, that's inmate clothing and cleaning supplies. The week of September 5th for the warrant summary is 178 total warrants, that amount was 640,000. 13% or 84,000, excuse me, is for the library, ebooks, audiobooks, print books, and so forth, utilities and building maintenance. 12% or 77,000 is for the county fair, marketing equipment and rental. 12% or 76,000 is for medical, dental, and vision insurance. 10% or 64,000 is for transportation, paint striping, radar detection supplies. 9% or 56,000 is for the roads department, let's see, road construction supplies. And 7% or 46,000 is for the jail, inmate medical services, utilities, and cleaning supplies. For the second week, which is the week of the 12th of September, the total warrant count was 173. Let's see, total issued, 466, and that amount was for 1.000, well, 1 million. 16% or 170,000 is for the transfer station, 4100 North Construction and 12th Street Rail Study, and that's, sorry, that's paid for by transportation tax dollars. 12% or 126,000 for, also for the transfer station, truck scale, disposal fees, and fuel. 11% or 118,000 is for the health department, grant-funded projects, clearinghouse contracts. 6% or 65,000, excuse me, that's 63,000, is for the jail, food, utilities, and building maintenance. 6% or 60,000 is for roads, road construction supplies and fuel. 5% or 54,000 is pass-through fees to the DMV. And 5% or 52,000 is clinical nursing services. The top five vendors, and this is combined between those two weeks, number one is Asphalt Construction and Excavating Company, 160K. Two is State of Utah for 124,000. Three is Staker Parsons for 63,000. Four is Rocky Mountain Power, it's 57,000. And five is Road Safe Traffic Systems for 57,000 as well. Happy to answer any questions after that long read there.
Thank you for that in-depth financial report, Mr. Horn. Questions? Commissioner Bollos, any questions for Mr. Horn?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward. I have no questions myself. I think the reason that was somewhat of a lengthy report is because that's actually a two-week history.
That is correct.
Yeah, because we were actually in meetings out at last week. Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Consent item five, request for approval of ACH payment to Zions Bank in the amount of $268,908.29. Six, request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on August 26, 2025. Seven, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Utah Youth Rodeo Association to hold their 2025 and 2026 rodeo season at the Golden Spike Event Center. Eight, request for approval to ratify a contract buying between Weber County and Fort Venetura Mountain Men for entertainment at the TCG WWR 2025 event, which I think took place last week. Great event, from what I understand. Nine, request for approval to ratify a contract buying between Weber County and the proper way for entertainment at the TCG WWR 2025 event. Again, another great event held. Ten, request for approval of a memorandum of understanding buying between Weber County and the America 250 Utah Commission to outline materials and information that Weber County will share with A25 OUT. Eleven, request for approval of amendments of a contract buying between Weber County and IEM to extend the original timeframe. Twelve, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and the Utah Health Policy Project, what they call UHPP, to collaborate in the execution of the Medicaid 1115 Justice Waiver in the Weber County Correction Facility to ensure compliance with HIPAA regulations and the PHI data sharing. Thirteen, request for approval to renew a contract buying between Weber County and correction software solution used by pre-trial services program. And fourteen, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and JUB Engineers for JUB to hold the executive director position at the Golden Spike Stormwater Coalition, which we discussed. Somewhat of a lengthy consent items, F1 through 14. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Bollos? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Commissioner Frower, I believe there's a number 15 on the next page.
I'm not seeing that on my sheet.
Okay. So you're going to get the one that's in the email, maybe it's been a minute.
I think the 14 was, is that right, Kristi?
Yeah.
Okay. According to Kristi, I've got the right document in front of me, Commissioner.
Okay, sounds good. If you're ready for a motion, then I move to approve. Set items F1 through 14.
Thank you very much. I'll second that. I'm going to place the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consent items have been approved, F1 through 14 is read. I now entertain a motion to the next item, which is to adjourn this meeting.
Move to adjourn.
All right, now we have a motion, second, non-debatable. Please say aye if you're in favor. Aye, motion carries. We're now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.